Are we ready? All right, heads up. Good evening. I call the Johnson City Board of Commissioners meeting on September the 17th of 2020 to order. Tonight, before we start our agenda and have our invocation, I will remind our audience, we are meeting in person. The commission is separated by Plexiglas. We can't even get at each other if we want to clunk each other on the head or anything. Our audience is socially distanced and wearing masks, so we appreciate you tuning in. Tonight, we're very honored to have Pastor Jeff Martin from Redeemer Community Church with us tonight to do our invocation. If we will all rise and stand, and we will have to put our masks back on because we're taller than the Plexiglas, and we'll do our pledge. Thank you, Pastor.
Father asks that you be over this meeting tonight. God, that you would guide the leadership of our city, give them prudence, give them a calmness when they're faced with crisis situations. God, ask that you would help them to ask the right questions for the decisions that need to be made. God, ask that you would give them wisdom to make the best choices for our city. Be over our city. We ask that you would bless us and let this be a place of peace, let this be a place of prosperity. And God, let Johnson City be an example to other cities to look to, to say that's how this can look, that's how this should look. And God, ask that you be over tonight for the things that need to be approved, for the things that need to be authorized. God, that you would help this leadership team steward the resources that they have with excellence. God, I know that some things have to be cut, some things are pushed forward, and we always ask that you would help them to do the right thing. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mr. Peterson, we will turn it over to you to lead us through the agenda.
Ma'am, your first order of business is consideration of the minutes of your meeting held on Thursday, September the 3rd.
Move for approval.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other comments on the minutes? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Next order of business is consideration of a request to close a portion of Ash and Ernest Streets for the dedication of the Women Suffrage Mural. This will be a closing of Ash from Union to 404 Ash Street and Ernest Street between Walnut and Ash. It will take place on Saturday, October the 10th, excuse me, from noon until 4:00. We recommend your approval.
Mr. Peterson, we don't have anyone here representing the coalition, but I can do that since I'm on the coalition. The request is so that those who are in attendance for the unveiling of the mural will have a safe place to stand. It will be an event that will be socially distanced, and all the participants will be wearing masks at that event. If you haven't been down on Ash Street, right across from the entrance to the courthouse, please drive by. The mural is brilliant. It is a beautiful tribute to the history of the suffrage movement, and not only the national movement, but what we uncovered here in Johnson City of the women who rallied and influenced the state of Tennessee to ratify the 19th Amendment. And so you'll see local women depicted, and men, in the mural. So if you get a chance to ride by, but it's going to be a great event, I hope. It's going to be on a Saturday afternoon that everybody can attend and enjoy the dedication. And what they will be doing is presenting it to the city for safekeeping. The funds for this mural were entirely raised through private funds, and the artist who is doing the mural is from Virginia and has done an amazing job. She took this as a real, as her age demographic is similar to mine, and she took this very personally, and I think she's very proud that this is one of her best works, so we're real thrilled about that. So the request is to close Ash Street.
Do you need a motion to approve?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All right, any other questions? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Next order of business is consideration of the consent agenda.
All right, Mr. Calhoun, do you have anything you'd like to pull for further review? Okay. Commissioner Hunter?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Fowler?
No.
All right. Vice Mayor?
No, thank you.
I am going to pull a couple here, Mr. Peterson, just 5.1, 2, 3, and 4, which all are CDBG funding. Just a brief overview, and you can bucket them all together about where this money came from and its intent and purpose, and how we are providing funding for these three agencies. And then also, if you just give a real quick update on 5.110, on the stream banking. And this is just kind of for information only.
Yes, ma'am. Preston, will you go get Bob, please? Andy, you want to do stream banking, please, sir?
I believe it was on in this packet. I believe it was in this packet where we came back and been working with TDEC as far as the stream bank mitigation goes. They wanted some utility lines moved out of the, or away from the creek. They don't like utility lines in a permanent buffer, and so that's why we went back with the consultant to get them to move those utility lines out, so they're doing some additional design.
And Mr. Best, if he would, for the public, this is at Buffalo Valley?
Yes.
And just what is stream banking, so they have an idea of?
Sure. This project is, we're basically taking a stream and improving its quality, making it a more natural type of a stream. And then what happens is, let's say someone wants to encapsulate or degrade a stream somewhere else in this region, then they can come to us and pay us some money to kind of build that stream back to natural, to a more natural state, to a more pristine state.
We get so many credits for the?
Correct.
For the linear feat that we?
That we improve, yes.
Improve?
Yes.
And we just sell the credits then to the?
Correct. We have to construct it and monitor it and?
So it becomes a revenue stream to the city as we look to transition from Buffalo Valley being a golf course to banked stream?
Correct. And this was the one by the main portion of the stream down there, kind of in the fairway. A lot of the other ones are smaller streams, but this is the larger stream.
And this project really doesn't denigrate the remainder of the property out there at all. We had 125 acres or so for the golf course. This will, you know, keep a beautiful green space going there, and I think it's a great project, and I think we're all anxious to get it complete.
Any other questions?
No.
The mayor's asked for just a little bit of an explanation and an update on the CDBG items, please, sir.
Certainly.
Just those three projects, the funding levels and, you know, the use of those funds and?
All these were approved in the FY '21 budget. The first one's for Appalachian Service Project, $159,000. Hard cost are $132.5. Project costs, soft costs are the other $26.5. That's then the standard set by the program. They anticipate rehabbing up to five homes and reconstruction on three homes. Depending on the condition of the homes, that could change a little bit. The second project is Eastern Eight. That's $80,000, and they're going to do one reconstruction on that, so it's a pretty major reconstruction. There's no admin costing that, that's all, all project cost. And the third is for Salvation Army to do renovations to their outdoor restroom facility for showers for homeless individuals, homeless folks. It'll be renovating the showers and also handicap access. So that's the three projects. These are all CDBG funding. The contract language in here is the same as it has been for past contracts, so none of that's changed. It's been reviewed by legal, so I'll be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Any other questions on these projects and our funding of such?
This is not the first time this year we've voted on similar CDBG funding, particularly for crisis homeless or at, I guess, at risk of homeless.
Yeah, these are all in the budget that was approved back in June. But when we get to the individual contracts, we have to vote on them again to actually approve the contract and authorize signature by the mayor.
Thank you. There's a notion out there that we aren't doing anything for the homeless, and by my count, right now, we've got a third of a million dollars going out the door today.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, there's other monies, too, that were approved as part of the budget, as part of the CARES Act, that they're working on that, too. So there's a number of other things going on, about $313,000 worth.
And within that, we, like $100,000 went to Second Harvest?
Yes.
Which is much in need today.
Salvation Army got about $113,000. Manor House got some, and Frontier Health got some for that, for projects to help out with the homeless. All of that specifically.
To help with emergency and transitional housing.
Yes.
And for those that don't know what the acronym is, could you tell us what the acronym is? The CDB?
Hold on a second. Can Commissioner Hunter say the acronym?
I'll say it if you?
It's easy to transpose the flatters there.
Trip over them.
It's the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Is that?
CDBG.
Funneled through the Community Development Fund, or?
Yes. It's, that's part of HUD, Housing and Urban Development. The program's administered out of the Knoxville Branch Office, which reports to the Atlanta Office, which reports to Washington.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Yeah, and I'm glad you pulled that, because, you know, I've had somebody ask me why we stopped funding community development, and I think it was more a matter of somebody who misread a budget.
Right.
And there's one more, I'll just go ahead, sometime this fall, I don't recall the exact date, there's work that we'll be doing around Langston, on that block around there, to complement all of the, what do we, what do we spend, two point, or what do we spend on the Langston facility? So it will extend, it'll redo the sidewalks around that block, new curbing, resurfacing, and then on Welburn Avenue, we'll be redoing that avenue. So that's going to spruce up in that neighborhood. It'll start there, it won't do the whole neighborhood, but it'll be a big jumpstart to improve the way that area looks and complement Langston.
I think this is a good time, too, when you talk about the funding source, the CDBG funds come through, they're federal government.
Correct.
It's federal money that goes, it's our taxes that go to Washington, and then they're funneled back to us. And that's controlled by the census. Is this correct, Mr. Peterson? So this is another point on why it's so important to take the census, because if our population falls?
Yes.
Those funds will be cut back.
Or if our population is undercounted, which is the real concern.
Yeah, it's very, very important.
It's very important.
There's so many ways that Johnson City is directly impacted by that.
And a big percentage of the CDBG funds are funneled into neighborhoods where housing renovations can take place, and we can help with restoration of some of the homes that, you know, may have run down, and so it's a good way for continued work in our neighborhoods where we can really make a difference.
Absolutely. That's the major focus of the city's CDBG program, is housing renovation.
Right.
And specifically for low-income individuals?
Yes, all for low-income, yes.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Appreciate it. Thank you. I think I got my four. Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Next is ordinance number 4754-20, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, being part of the appendix to ordinance number 1519, entitled an ordinance to adopt a code of laws and ordinances for the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances in conflict therewith and aminitory thereof by changing from R5 High Density Residential Zoning to B4 Planned Arterial Business Zoning portions of certain property identified as tax map 29 parcel 4.02, ready for your consideration on first reading. Mr. Mitchell, you'd explain it, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mayor, Commissioners, this is a piece of property up right to the east of the Exit 17 interchange, the Boones Creek Road interchange. And the property here, it's a little hard to see the parcel lines, but this is the property here, and it is currently split zoned. Anytime, so it's actually great that the property owner is asking for this rezoning. This potentially would have been one that the city initiated to correct the split zoning. But in this particular case, Mr. Wilson is seeking to correct the split zoning, and he wants the entire thing to be zoned B4, or, which is our general commercial retail zone. There currently is a small apartment building up here on this upper portion in the R5. He has had conversation with the tenants that live in this apartment building. If rezoned to B4, the building would be considered grandfathered in. No one is going to have to move or go anywhere. They can stay there forever as long as he keeps the building there. If and when he ever decides to sell the property, it's currently for sale, and somebody purchased it and wants to redevelop the site, then at that time, the tenants would need to find new housing, and the building would be removed and the property redeveloped. But for now, Mr. Wilson has had those conversations with his tenants. He is seeking the rezoning. Planning Commission was in support unanimously of the request, and just so happens that this is also within the proposed economic incentive zone around the Boones Creek Interchange. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Mitchell? Is there a motion?
So moved. Planning Commission had a conversation about this, and I think Mr. Wilson called in and spoke?
Correct.
And said he had met with all the tenants in the building and assured them that there wasn't anything that was going to happen immediately. And it was unanimous.
Second.
Second. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Next order of business is consideration of a resolution on second reading. This resolution has to do with the Hodge-Hunt annexation. A resolution to annex certain properties located within the 11th Civil District of Washington County, Tennessee, adjoining the present corporate boundaries of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, said properties being known as the Hodge-Hunt Annexation. To zone said properties B4 Planned Arterial Business as described herein and to amend the zoning map of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee accordingly, being a part of the appendix to ordinance number 1519. This is ready for your consideration on second reading. And I would remind you that this item and the next two will have public hearing at the third reading. This is due to the fact that we changed from an electronic meeting to an in-person meeting in order to make sure that we made the notification requirement. So we will not have public hearing this evening.
Mr. Rachel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. And Lynn Hodge, one of the applicants, he was aware of this change in the public hearing. We discussed this with him out in the lobby during, after first reading, so he is aware of that as well. I will go through this and really kind of cover all three of these items for you. As Mr. Peterson noted, this is a request for roughly 42 acres. It is adjacent to a piece that you recently annexed earlier this summer, the 19-acre, or almost 20-acre Sharp Farm Annexation, just to the north. And so this is a roughly 42-acre piece that is made up of two different parcels along Christian Church Road, and the requested zoning assignment is B4. Plan of services have been provided to you, and the recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve this piece of property. These two pieces of property are also found within the Exit 17 interchange area, the economic incentive zone.
Thank you. We will take each item separately, but I don't think we need any additional explanation of the zoning and the plan of services. So is there a motion on the resolution on second reading?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Do we have a motion on ordinance number 4750?
Mayor, I hate to be, I need to read the caption.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right, I jumped out of order then, so please go ahead.
Ordinance number 4751-20, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, being part of the appendix to ordinance number 1519, entitled an ordinance to adopt a code of laws and ordinances for the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances in conflict therewith and aminitory thereof by assigning B4 Planned Arterial Business Zoning to a portion of certain property within the 11th Civil District of Washington County, Tennessee, known as the Hodge-Hunt Annexation, is ready for your consideration on second reading.
Is there a motion?
Still.
Vice Mayor and Commissioner Fowler, second. Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
I will not jump ahead. Take it.
This is the one you could have jumped ahead. This is consideration of the plan services on second reading.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Next order of business is consideration of ordinance number 4752-20, an ordinance appropriating additional funds to the various departments and divisions of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, with the additional revenue from local, state, and federal sources, is ready for your consideration on second reading. And again, this is the school budget amendment that gets their budget squared away for FY '20.
No changes since?
No changes since your first reading. No, ma'am.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions about the amendment? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Next order of business is consideration of ordinance number 4753-20, an ordinance to amend Article 2, definition of terms used in the code, and Article 6, use requirements by district in the zoning code of the city of Johnson City, ready for your consideration on second reading. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. This is the text amendment to the zoning ordinance where we are requesting that residential be reintroduced to first-floor buildings in certain areas, certain situations. I've got up here on the screen.
Is it the same as the presentation two weeks ago, or have there been modifications?
There have not been modifications, but I do have an update based on a question you asked, so I can skip that particular slide and go straight to the question that was asked. There was a question asked about Ash Street. So this is an aerial view here of the building, the Cherry Street development, and the back of that is, fronts onto Ash Street. So part of the question, you'll see this bird's eye view here, is could this apply to that particular street? Our recommendation would be that anytime you make amendments to the zoning ordinance and you're amending a particular district, either one or multiple districts, that standard has to apply uniformly across the entire district. So the only way that you would really be able to allow for residential on Ash Street is to effectively exempt local roads, because that's a local road. Once you exempt local roads, you've just effectively cored out the whole intent of this ordinance, and that is to protect the commercial spaces that front onto public streets and allow for residential to open up into these inner spaces like alleys and parking lots and things like that. So our recommendation is to leave it as is. We understand that the back of this building does have an opportunity, but I would actually argue that it's a little short-sighted at this time to want to put residential back here. I think that as we continue to grow and see a further redevelopment in our downtown area, and especially if, this is my department, I realize, we can continue to work with this property owner to clean up the junkyard here in between Walnut and Ash Street. We'd really like to see this block behind Cherry Street redeveloped. And so I think there's an opportunity for small commercial, niche commercial, small businesses to be able to open up along the back of this building.
My question wasn't advocating for residential, it was just more to understand, clarifying where it would apply and where it would not.
Absolutely, absolutely. Understand.
All right, any other questions?
One quick question, just out of curiosity. Have you gotten any calls or comments after the first reading about this issue?
Did not. The only calls that I received was from one of the developers that is involved with the Henry, who is interested in this particular text amendment, but he was pleased with the outcome of the first reading and was just interested in how things were going.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Rachel.
This takes us to other business. The first being a resolution declaring the intent of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, to reimburse itself for certain expenditures in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $12,400,000 relating to the improvements to school facilities of the city with the proceeds of bonds or other obligations to be issued by the city of Johnson City, Tennessee. This is a reimbursement resolution, obviously, for the, to be intended to allow us to reimburse ourselves when we do issue bonds associated with the elementary school expansions that we're currently in. We have already paid for design work, engineering, and some actual construction at Southside on a cash basis, so when we issue bonds here in the near future, we will be able to reimburse ourselves out of the proceeds of that. This is typical and customary for us so that we can keep projects moving a little quicker.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Next order of business is consider approval of the location for a mural to be located at 73 Buffalo Street. Andy, you up to speed on this one, please, sir?
Thank you. This particular location, and I guess what we're asking for approval, the Johnson City Art Committee has approved the design that's in your packet. The location is at the corner of Buffalo and Market, kind of behind the fountain, if you're familiar with that little fountain area there. Property's owned by the Johnson City Housing Authority, and they've given their permission for the mural to go on that wall.
I think it's interesting to comment the design of this mural, which is of three small children, and an item we're going to approve, the MOU in just a moment, is about becoming a child-friendly city. And so I think it's a very great companion to speak of what we're trying to achieve here in Johnson City, so it's a great location for it. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter? Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Next order of business is to consider approval of an agreement with Bill Bledsoe for the restoration of the mural located in Majestic Park. The cost of this is ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. This will involve public works, doing some prep work on that wall, and then we would be charged with maintaining it once the mural is restored. We would recommend your approval.
Was Mr. Bledsoe the original artist of this mural?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And what year was it originally done? It's probably in the write-off, but.
Mid-nineties. I was going to say.
Twenty-five years ago, I think it is.
Yeah, I'd say it would be twenty-five years ago.
Well, certainly with just completing our one hundred and fiftieth birthday and Siskel and Centennial, with the train being featured so much, I think it's, it's certainly deserving to have this restored. It's, it's kind of a mainstay downtown, so is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments? Ms. Jennings.
Commissioner Calhoun.
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Next order of business is consideration of an, of approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Johnson City and the United States Fund for UNICEF. As the mayor pointed out previously, this is the MOU between the two parties that will enable us to apply for and work towards the designation of a child-friendly city, as, as we've talked about in the past. This certainly addresses things such as poverty, nutrition, health, the ability to get children a good start in life at an early age so that they've got equal opportunity for a good life down the road. This in conjunction with our early development instrument that we've been working on, I think is, is going to be very beneficial to allow us to get all neighborhoods and, and all folks involved in raising kids and making sure that we've got a community that supports the proper growth and maturation of young children. We would recommend your approval.
And this provides us actually with a framework that we use over time. You're not going to be able to do everything at one time, but it gives us that direction and how we can make investments where, where appropriate, so. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
For a second. Create a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions?
I guess I would just add to what Pete said. What we're really talking about doing is looking at our community as a whole, looking at the children in our community as a whole, and then recognizing that as a community we have resources, and there may be places where the, the children of the community and the resources of the community may not be in the same neighborhood. And this really serves to identify opportunities to make sure we're connecting the dots. And we connect those dots and it changes the trajectory of people's lives. It's the difference between a nine-year-old who statistically is more likely to go to jail than they are to go to college. It's the difference between somebody who dies in their fifties and somebody who dies in their eighties. And so I think it's worth noting that these are part of a long, bigger picture action plan that, that is sort of tedious and time-consuming and doesn't miraculously resolve at the end of a week or the end of a month, but is, is the critical building block that creates a different Johnson City for our children and grandchildren and those that follow prospectively. And I, I just think we can't say that enough.
Well said, thank you. Ms. Jennings.
Commissioner Calhoun.
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Brock.
Yes.
These next four items are the vast majority of the manager's report this evening. I've asked four different departments to come up and report out and give you a status update on some projects and some information that, that we've been working on. And I'd like to start with John Lane with Water Sewer Projects. And John, thanks for coming up and making the presentation.
Yeah. Thanks for having me. See if I can pull it up real quick.
Mayor, could I interrupt just for a second and introduce some guests who may be leaving shortly? Is that appropriate?
That would be great. You're the boss.
Say that again, please. We've got, we've got at least three of our pharmacy students from the Gatton College of Pharmacy who are participating in a leadership elective. Part of leadership is outside the profession and in their community. And the mayor came and spoke to the class by Zoom, and if we don't have at least thirteen viewers online, they're in trouble. They had the choice of either watching online or coming and at least hearing a good portion of the meeting tonight, and I just wanted to thank them for coming and recognize them and the thirteen people that are watching online. So future city commissioners in the city, wherever you reside, which is hopefully Johnson City, so thank you for coming.
Thank you, Dr. Calhoun. Sorry, I should have recognized them earlier, so.
Would it be fair to make a recommendation for extra credit if, for physical appearance?
Do you all want us to vote on extra credit for you today?
You should have. Bonus points.
Thank you, John, go ahead.
Yeah, no problem. So I'll, I'll try to make this pretty quick. Feel free to stop me anytime as I'm going through the slides, so give you the latest update on all our capital projects and water sewer. So introduction. Capital projects and water sewer, we have two types, rate-funded capital and debt-funded capital. Debt-funded capital are kind of a longer delivery process, usually they're contract delivery. We usually refer back to our master plans for determining where these are going to be targeted at. And the rate-funded capital projects are more recurring projects like our galvanized project, our sewer rehab project, and kind of our tank recoding projects. These are usually done in six to eighteen months, a little shorter, and can be done by force account or by contract delivery. Real quick on this slide, it was just, we kind of, we have several master plans we follow kind of determining where our next projects are going to be. On the water side, we have a master plan from two thousand and eight, and we have several wastewater master plans, and we also have a technology master plan from two thousand and sixteen. In the next couple of years, we do look at doing some full or partial updates to some of these master plans, but they're usually twenty-year roadmaps. Projects completed since, in the last few months, Brush Creek and Knob Creek wastewater treatment plant improvements. This project started with Frizell Construction in two thousand and sixteen. They actually, they, they demobilized in fall of two thousand and nineteen. In this picture here, you see these are two buildings that were constructed as part of that project. This is our solids processing building, and this is the disinfection building that were both recently constructed. We plan on doing a closeout of this project later this fall. And this is kind of, this is kind of, these are called sludge presses, so this is inside that solids processing building at the Brush Creek wastewater treatment plant, and this is kind of the outside of that, of that process, but we've been working with the manufacturer to resolve some of the acceptance issues we had with these two sludge presses.
I visited there not too long ago. Maybe some of those little deodorizers might be good inside the building.
Yeah, it's, it's a strong smell in there, there's no doubt about that.
Every citizen needs to visit.
At least once.
The sewer treatment and the Iris Glen. You need to know where it goes.
It's a very strong smell.
What weather storage in Phase One and Headworks, this is still part of that Brush Creek project. The picture on the left was when construction was complete at the control equipment. The picture in the middle was February of two thousand and twenty. We actually had a, a pipe delivery truck kind of came in the wrong gate at Brush, at Brush Creek wastewater treatment plant and caused some serious damage to some of this control equipment. So we filed a claim with our insurance company, but this is ongoing, that they caused some significant damage there.
So they kind of went through the wrong gate?
They went through the wrong gate and then kept going, and so just, they didn't stop. Cherokee Reservoir Repair and Repainting. So this is, this tank is located off Sewer Drive, kind of off Cherokee Road. It was awarded American Sun Craft in December of last year. We, project is completed, the tank's been repainted and it's been, it's back in service, and we closed this one out at the August sixth city commission meeting. Projects that are presently under delivery, Boones Creek and I twenty-six interchange. So this project is part of the T-Dot project that's ongoing, if you're driving off exit seventeen now. There's actually been a lot of water and sewer work as well. Right now, we, we've been installing a twenty-four inch sewer line underneath the interchange. We're ninety-five percent complete on the new sewer line. We're also doing a sixteen inch water line, we're about sixty-one complete, sixty-one percent complete on the, the water line as well, so that's going well. On the sewer line, though, it's extremely slow, it's deep, so if you haven't driven through there recently, the sewer line's about eighteen feet deep, and there's rock that they hit when they hit it, so it's, it's not fast, it's not fast work at all. So you can kind of see here with the trench box, and this is kind of on the Bob Evans side of Boones Creek, but they're setting a sewer manhole here and they're putting in a pipe, a sewer pipe here, and that's underneath the interchange itself, but it's going well to date. Masters Knob Tank Repair and Repainting. This is one of our larger water tanks in the system. It's actually kind of off the hill, the hill above East Lakeview Drive and Oakland Avenue, it's off Hawthorne Drive. It was last recoded in nineteen ninety-nine, but it's a two-million gallon tank. You recently awarded the project to Scott I Enterprises, so the tank now has been drained, contractor's on site, and they've actually been starting to repaint the interior of the tank. So it's going well, they plan to be done in December of this year.
Do they do the exterior, too?
They, they first do, they drain it, and then they actually get a big pressure washer and pressure wash, pressure wash the inside and the outside, so then they, they paint the interior first, when that's done, then they'll paint the, the exterior. So right now, it looks good on the interior, but still not very good on the outside, so next couple of weeks, they'll be doing the exterior of it. ARC grant for downtown. This is a project that does have an ARC grant involved. It's hard to see on here, but red is the sewer line that actually runs under Buffalo Street, kind of from Cherry Street, past Muncie Church and kind of Water Street here. We had this project out to bid in July of last year, thinking we were going to do construction last fall. Bits came in a lot higher than we expected, so we re-advertised the project this summer. It was awarded previously on the July second city commission agenda for Morgan Contracting. So in October, contractor will be mobilizing on Buffalo Street. So if you're driving on Buffalo Street in the next couple of weeks, you might see these kind of big yellow boxes. This is actually sewer bypass pumping, and so we have to do these, we have to install these temporarily on Buffalo Street to kind of bypass the existing sewer flow while we're doing the, the rehab to the existing sewer line under Buffalo Street.
John, back to the water tank being painted.
Sure.
How do you choose the exterior color? I'll get to my question in just a minute.
It's kind of a standard color, so if it's a steel tank, we usually go with what's called tank white. It's like the same white color you see at Cherokee tank. And then for a concrete tank, it's kind of, it's called Bermuda tan, it's the same tan color that you have at Tanneri Knob tank, but it's kind of those two default colors we just kind of have done for both tanks.
Is there some sort of international body that determines those colors?
It's actually based on, there's, there's different painting manufacturers that can be in the specification, so based on those, they have a couple of color options.
Well, I, I had for the first time a complaint that the tank was too bright.
Too bright?
Too bright, yeah.
Yeah, and it was first time in twenty years, so it's going to take some time to get it looking a little rougher.
Maybe it's just clean, and that's why, yeah.
What about the, like the science hill, the nineteen eighty blues?
Yes, so those are our, what we call our spearoid tanks, kind of the big stem, they're kind of a blue color, so that's, that's what our steel tanks do, that we do have a different blue for those, that, and so that, that's our Liberty Bell tank, and so that's kind of on the horizon the next few years to repaint, too.
And it'll stay blue?
It'll stay blue, yeah.
And we decal it or put a logo, I mean, these are really noticeable around town.
That's, I think, the only one we have with any type of logo is the Liberty Bell tank right now.
Okay, somebody was hoping the one at Tanneri Knobs would at least have a bicycle on it or something.
She's not kidding, they were really.
And it might not be a bad idea, since it's Google Earth, right up on the top.
Put it on the roof.
Questions?
These are important questions.
They are very important questions, yeah. Buttermilk Road, if you've driven kind of down State Route thirty-six, Buttermilk Road kind of merges onto State Route thirty-six, we've been replacing our water line there, so it's a little over nine thousand feet of an existing four-inch cast iron water line. They're doing really well, contractor's working right now, they're a little over halfway done with the main, main line, fifty-one hundred feet to date. Upper Edie Creek, this project phases out our Garland Farms lift station, so Garland Farms neighborhood is here. It was broken in two phases, so Phase One is what we define as kind of the keef off a road portion right off of Boones Creek Road, and Phase Two is the, off of Boon Station Road. Phase One, we've already ordered the contract to Merkel Brothers, they actually started construction on Monday, and Phase Two was awarded to Thomas Construction, and they'll be starting next month in October. K two D Sewer Rehab Project, K two D is our identifier for kind of the sewer sub-basin, but it's kind of the Princeton Road corridor. So Princeton Road in the K two D area is kind of bounded by East Oakland Avenue to the downstream side, and I twenty-six kind of on the upstream side. And so this is kind of what we're doing is our new, our yearly sewer rehab project, so it's kind of the pipe within a pipe, rehab the existing sewer lines, rehab the manholes. Project was already awarded to Gulf Coast Underground, and they're presently working, and they'll plan to be done winter of two thousand and twenty-one. EDA Grant, so this is also at the Brush Creek wastewater treatment plant. We're going to be replacing some nineteen seventy-one and eighty-five equipment there, so improve efficiency and reliability. This is kind of what a blower will look like that's going to be installed there. It's out to bid right now, we open September thirtieth, and then we plan to start winter of two thousand and twenty-one for this one. Lower Brush Creek Interceptor Project, this is one of our biggest ones, it's part of our capital delivery plan. This project was out to bid in, earlier this year, we opened bids February nineteenth, and they came in much higher than we, we anticipated. So the last few months, we've been working with our contract, our consultant, and the best option was to split it into two contracts. So contract one is a little over thirteen thousand feet, and contract two is seventy-six hundred feet. It originally was twenty-one thousand feet altogether when we bid out in the spring, and there was just, it was just too much work for a contractor based on the prices.
So you, you have not changed the scope, you've just broken it into two smaller?
We also changed the scope, we, we also did some cost savings alternatives, talking with the consultant about shallowing up portions of on the lower end. That was one of the feedback questions we got from some of the bidders, is it was just too deep. And so we were, on the lower end, we, we shallowed up portions of it, and we also have been working to, to get a buffer to be closer to the creek in order to be able to blast it.
Because I had heard from some people that the bonding requirement of the bigger project precluded some from bidding, because that was you all were hearing, too?
We, we just heard that some contractors, it was such a large project, it was a two-year construction project, so by breaking it up, we think it might be able to be targeted by more bidders potentially. It was just, it was just such a large project for us, I mean, twenty-one thousand feet, and it was going to be replacing a thirty-inch sewer pipe with a forty-two inch sewer pipe, so that was, it would be by far our biggest sewer line in the system.
Has it gone out, or we already chosen the contractors?
We actually were bidding out this Sunday, so a couple of days.
All right, so.
Contract one will be on, will be bid out on Sunday.
Does the value engineering cause any concern of any issues in the future of having it higher than what was originally proposed, or?
The only change was we were trying to phase out one of our existing sewer pump stations. When we shallowed it up, we won't be able to phase that out anymore, but the cost savings of shallowing it up just kind of makes sense over time. Any other questions there? In contract two, we plan to put out once contract one's been opened and awarded. This is kind of a, a map showing the difference. Contract one ends up being about two-thirds of the project, and contract two is the upper end, which will be the last third of the project. But we, we found a good breaking point with the consultant on, for contract one, it ties back into the existing sewer line really well right there.
So I can't let it pass, I always have to ask this on this particular project, are we still thinking that we possibly could, could, when we put it back, have a trail system?
I think that's still been discussed, but I think right now, we're first going to just get the sewer line installed and all contract one and contract two first. Projects to be advertised in calendar twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Wastewater Lift Station phase out, kind of like I said earlier, we, we try to target Wastewater Lift Station phase out, kind of like I said earlier, we, we try to target certain lift stations to phase out. There's about 20% of our system has sewer lift stations that could be phased out by gravity sewer. The benefit to that is you don't have the operations and maintenance cost of sending personnel weekly, monthly to go check on them. So we have an upcoming project which we're seeing is phase two. It's kind of on Carroll Creek Road from Terracourt to the railroad trestle, kind of in front of Boone Trail Baptist. That'll be our phase two project. We had it out to bid this spring. It was actually bid in March, right when COVID was first happening and we weren't getting a lot of interest. So we canceled the bids and we kind of replanned. We planned to rebid it later this fall. Unicoi Springs, if you ever go out to Unicoi County, we have an existing spring house out there that it supplies about 3 million gallons of our drinking water daily. The spring house itself is from about 1920. We've been using the spring since about 1910. So this project actually is replacing the existing spring house. So this is kind of a rendering of what the new spring house will look at, look like in the end. We're planning on bidding this out next month in October and then construction in winter 2021. 2009 Eastward Water Expansion Project. So it's the design of over 14,000 feet of water line. So the, the purpose of this is addition, eliminating some water booster stations, increasing some fire protection and some enhanced storage west of I-26. We were actually just received the 60% plans. We're planning on bidding out phase one, which is what we say is line A and line B. It's kind of Swadley Road is line B area and line A is kind of King Springs Road area. And that's in winter 2021, bidding that out. West Walnut Street, on the water sewer side, we received 60% plans. We also just recently received 60% plans for Ernest Street, which sounds like that's kind of moving forward a little ahead of that. And so it'll, it'll involve some water and sewer relocation as well. 2020 Galvanize, this is one of our annual projects we do. In 2020, we're looking at the Oak Grove area and the, the West Market Street area. Oak Grove is Shannon View Road, kind of the one you see kind of making the bend here and some adjacent streets there out in Oak Grove. And West Market Street, this is kind of bounded by, it's actually a little south of West Market Street, kind of bounded by Veterans Way to the west, Lamont Street to the south and kind of Whitney Street to the east. So we, we are consultants working on 90% plans right now and then we figure winter of 2021 will bid this out. Water Sewer Service Center Replacement. So our existing sewer, water sewer service complex is here. The Brush Creek wastewater treatment plant is here. So kind of on the map, Witaga Road, Riverview Drive. Y'all approved the purchase of the 216 Fairhaven Road property, April the 30th at a special called meeting. The city closed on the property August the 18th. At the August 20th commission meeting, Kane Ration West was approved to begin the architectural design. So that's where we're at right now is we plan to have the architectural design done in early 2021. We figure probably site grading in spring, December of next year with the occupancy of the new facility possibly by the end of county year 2022.
What's the square footage of the new building?
It's.
Actually multiple buildings. And you've got vehicle storage building. You've got an admin building, which will have admin and engineering and then you've got the warehouse building. You've got some sheds, like three-sided sheds, like we've got down at Public Works or some of those for some other vehicle storage. So it's, it's really a complex. If I remember right, there's four buildings. And there'll be a fuel island down there. I mean, we've got a fuel island down on the river. So it's, it's pretty much a complete. We're picking up pretty much everything that's on the river, other than the wastewater plant and bringing up to the end of Eddie Williams Drive.
And meter reading right now is kind of right next to purchasing. Meter reading would actually be in this, this new facility. So another benefit is it's kind of bringing all of our water sewer personnel besides the staff at the, at the plants at this one location. So kind of make it easier to, in a non-COVID setting to kind of interface with.
And the equipment in a, in a much more secure area than?
And in the dry, which is really, yes ma'am.
Project staging for development and delivery. B Sewer Force Main Project. This was just, the design services was passed just a few minutes ago tonight. This project though involves the installation of a 30 inch sewer force main from our B sewer lift station to our D sewer lift station. B is kind of at Cedar Point Road, right next to Boone Lake. And D sewer lift station is right near Honaker Court off of State Route 36. And the benefit of this is it's just extra capacity in our regional system, kind of the Boons Creek gray corridor that, long-term that just helps for capacity out there. And then the C sewer pump station replacement, this was also just approved a few minutes ago for design services. This will be replacing our existing C sewer lift station, which is off Boring Chapel Road. So the new station will have a new concrete wet well, new electrical equipment, new pumps and also a new standby generator. And then the lower Boons Creek Interceptor Replacement. This project will kind of take off right where the T dot exit 17 project ends. So we've been installing that new 24 inch sewer line as part of the exit 17 project. This will start right there and then go all the way to our B sewer lift station. So it's about 15,000 feet. The benefit is this also extra capacity kind of on the, the Boons Creek Road corridor of Johnson City. And we plan to have a design services task order for this probably in October. I'll go through these real fast. These are kind of just projects that are on the horizon coming up for us. For water and wastewater, we have a state route 75 T dot project that's going on right now, kind of right near Tri States Airport. So it involves a little bit of water and sewer relocation. The Knob Creek Flyover Project will have some water and sewer work as well. And then y'all kind of asked about the recoding projects for tanks. Our next one we have targeted for next year is West Hills Tank. So it's the one you kind of see, it's on North Barton Street, but you can kind of see it above the tree line at Indian Ridge Road and State of Franklin Road, kind of up off the trees. That's the next, that's our next planned water tank to rehab next year. And on the sewer side, I'll also mention one thing. We have three screw pumps at our Knob Creek wastewater treatment plant. In one of the October meetings, we plan to try to replace one of those existing screw pumps. So that, that'll be on the commission agenda for approval. And then combined AMI phasing, we do plan on engaging consultant in the next, in the next few months for implementation, an implementation plan for this project. Force account projects, H Sewer Lift Station. This is our sewer lift station that's right next to the Appalachian Fairgrounds. So we just recently finished adding some new black vinyl fencing, a new standby generator and some new stone inside the fence. And if you see that this, this station catches kind of the flow from the Appalachian Fairgrounds and Daniel Boone High School. So it's kind of one of our more important stations out in the regional system. And then for our next two places, we plan on putting a standby generator, Town Acres Lift Station, which is right across the street from the Town Acres Elementary School. And then our U Station, which is right next to Tri States Airport. Those are our next two targeted areas to put standby power. And here's just a couple recent force account projects that are completed. WR is a water replacement that was done force account recently. WE is water extension. SE is sewer extension and SR is sewer replacement. And then these are some projects that we have ongoing right now. Boone Station Road, this kind of ties in with the Upper Edie Creek Project. Force account, right now we are laying a 12 inch water line. If you drive Boone Station Road, kind of near Garland Farms neighborhood, you'll see us out working right now, installing that new 12 inch water line. Any other questions?
D Station, the one out next to the trailer park?
Yes. And it compounds, A and B and C, I'll go to D Station right now.
Oh, any, any questions? That was a bit overwhelming.
I know, it's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, a lot of work.
It's not as overwhelming as Weatherspoon though. When he starts with the 100 year history of public water in Johnson City and 38 systems.
I try to condense it a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask Andy Best to come up and give us an overview of some public works projects, please.
Well, thank you. Let's see if I can find our slideshow. So this is an update of, of the public works projects that's been going on for the last probably six months or so. I guess the first one we want to talk about is Baxter. This project actually went really well. It came in before time and at budget, so didn't have any overruns on this one. The reason we did this project is that culvert was actually collapsing and it, it, one of the walls had actually started to fall in toward the creek and so we identified that and we were able to get this project done. Next project that we have here, this is Mockingbird Lane Extension. We've went out and curbed and put in the roundabout for about half of it. We're waiting for the project to move a little bit further before we do the other half. The contractor seems to believe it'll be in the next couple of weeks. It's probably going to be a little bit longer than that, but, but we'll be out there probably in the next month or so, start back out on this project and take it back over to Sundale.
Where's Mockingbird? I'm not familiar with it.
This is the road extension between Sundale and the back of the theater mall. And so this, 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 this is going forward and it's been one of the ones we've been working on. We also were able to complete Mockingbird, excuse me, not Mockingbird, Lark and Novus. I think it's called Novus now, but this is between State of Franklin. So where the picture's taken is standing on State of Franklin, looking back toward Indian Ridge. And this was a connector. Eventually we'll have a, a traffic signal at this location. I think I've got another picture of it. This is the other side of Lark or now Novus Drive. This was actually contracted. It was through monies from T dot and it is complete now. So this goes and connects State of Franklin over to Market Street.
The one that connects to Indian Ridge, is there anything further along? Stand it out further or is anything going to happen to Indian Ridge to straighten that out or widen it or?
Not, no, not, not any immediate plans. That was just more to, if we go back here, where Indian Ridge comes out onto State of Franklin, we were going to put a signal here. So it, it just helps to, to move more of the traffic over to this signalized intersection versus up at the next intersection.
You raise a good point. At some point in time, we'll have to do some improvements to Indian Ridge from this intersection back to Market. I, I think that, once people find this, that the traffic on Indian Ridge will pick up. The good news is, we know it's coming. The good news is that'll be a really expensive project because there's some houses really close to the road there and you've got a big open ditch and that, that won't be a cheap project, but it will, it will be a good addition to, to the road system.
What's the timeline on the, on the traffic lights on, on both Market and State Franklin?
So we have had the signal poles ordered in November. They're due to be here in November, but that will be a year since we've ordered them. So because of, they're usually a six monthly time. Because of COVID and just situations, they're coming out of Ohio, but it's a year and we're actually thinking from the communications we're getting, it's probably going to be pushed from there. We're proceeding with getting, we're going to be bidding out the foundation boring. That's, should be coming for you here in a couple of commissions whenever we get that bid out. We actually thought we could just get quotes, but it, the one quote that we got was, means it'll have to be bid, so it may take a little bit longer. But that still should be done before the poles get here.
So you'll start on some aspects of it?
Correct. We, we're hoping to be done by the end of November, but again, it all depends on pole delivery.
And where do those poles come from?
Ohio.
Pollan? Pollan? It's a dad joke, sorry.
But the rest of this project, so Lark or Novus, excuse me, again, the state project, we did add sidewalk or the trail that will connect it to the other side. And, and again, we've already got some trail systems over there. Back to the signal, we'd be, we'll be putting a signal here at State of Franklin and Novus and then one at Market. So just to follow.
So the name of the street is Novus?
N-O-V-U-S, yes, Novus.
Where did that come from?
I think it came from planning and I think it's Latin for new. And that's, that's what I heard. I just, we just put the signs up, so I don't know exactly who came up with the.
My face is not conveying anything. It's just, okay.
So what this project is here, this is out at Bowser's Ridge. This is our closed landfill that we still have to maintain. The state comes out and inspects it yearly. And what, what's going on is as the debris, I guess disintegrates, we have low spots and it holds water. So we're having to raise it up and there were several wet spots that we're having to actually fill. And then we're having to put a berm in to take the water from the top down over the side. So this is actually a fairly large project for us. They've been hauling dirt out there for a while and we've been getting that actually from the Boons Creek interchange. They've been getting it from Summers and Taylor. So I guess they've hauled dirt for several months out there, just so we'll have enough to, to do this project. The next one is here, this is just a picture of Lone Oak. And the reason this picture's in the slideshow is just to, to kind of convey that, you know, there is a lot of work, you know, goes on to get our streets ready for paving. We have to dig out patches and, and patch and get all the, the bad spots of the road ready. We can't just always go in and grind and then, or mill and pave. So we have to, this is just kind of example of several spots where we've had to dig it out, get it ready and get it prepared before we can pave it.
So with Lone Oak, that was originally a county road, right?
Yes.
Are y'all upgrading it to city standards or?
Yes, yes. Usually in this particular situation, we're taking out the soft spots. I don't believe we're going to do a whole lot of milling here. If any, we'll just go up and, and bring, put more asphalt on, on top of it.
Any straightening of the road that will happen?
Uh, no, not, no.
This picture is on the, on the other side of Cherokee.
Side of Cherokee.
Dry Creek. Yes, we're not going from.
From the school over to Green.
Correct. Yeah, this is just from Cherokee to Dry Creek.
How far up Dry Creek will it go?
To the sea limits, which is roughly Singing Creek Road.
Yeah, so it's not a really long section. So no sidewalks will be put in?
No, no, we're just widening or not widening, but just overlaying that particular section. Now we'll get to some what we widen. This is, this picture here is actually of Singing Creek and it's just to kind of show that, that the wall here, we've actually been, in the last few months, we've been doing a lot of work on drainage calls. This particular instance, the wall fell over during our flood event in July. And so we've got a design on that. We're, we're, we're waiting on a design of that. We'll probably reconstruct that wall in-house. But there was a wall there. It used to extend all the way to, to here. And so they're working with the state to get the correct permits to actually put that wall back in. But this is at David Miller Road and Singing Creek Road. So this is David Miller going up the hill here. The next image is, we actually did during that same event, we had Miller Lane Bridge that washed out. It actually collapsed. So we did have to spend some time to put in a temporary bridge. The, the current bridge is under design or a replacement bridge was, we actually had this identified and under designed, it just collapsed before we got all the design completed. But we're working with FEMA to possibly get reimbursement for this project. We also had another structure. This is off of South Run Street where Ashley Academy is going. The Catbird Creek flowed through this general area and we had a structure that collapsed. So we took the opportunity when it collapsed to actually kind of also build a bypass ditch. That area kind of floods over there by Tipton Hays or Haynes. And so we, this is kind of the outlet side of that ditch. So we, we widened that quite a bit. And then this is just where it goes back under the interstate. This is out at Pine Oaks Golf Course. I think we did some slope, slope repair or, or wall repair stabilization there, just to, to show you that we, we have been working on, on some of those repairs. This is Swadley. So you ask if we, we had widened it, we went ahead and widened Swadley as much as we could. Water and Sewers come through with a project. I don't know if he mentioned it, but I know they've been working on a project and they're going to look at actually getting enough right of way so we can actually put a sidewalk on Swadley. Right now, we just don't have any right of way out there. I mean, honestly, the, the poles are basically the back of it and, and we really just don't have a, a lot of right of way. So we widened it as much as we could within the existing right of way.
Andy, you're all thinking about like, particularly in a place like this, it's a little rural out through there, putting the wide, a little bit wider kind of trail type sidewalk without the curbs and all that stuff on it so people can ride their bikes and?
Yeah, we'd like to put in eight foot. I mean, that's, that's our goal, but it'll all depend on how much right of way that, that we can get. And, and there's some sections and I think on the next slide maybe one.
It's really not that rural. There's a lot of apartments.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of apartments.
Yeah, and, and I think Water and Sewers go in on the left side of this picture or the north side of the Swadley. And I think there's several big trees in there that the property owners really like. And so we've got also kind of worked with them and not try to, you know, remove the trees. But we did widen Swadley. It was very narrow, so we did widen it a couple of feet. We also widened the, where you turn onto Swadley as much as a raise as we could get just to, just to help larger vehicles turning in onto Swadley from Milligan Highway. So this is at Cedar Grove Road. This is a trail that we're building. So basically there from Swadley or, or Milligan Highway goes down Cedar Grove Road. It'll go by those new apartments there and then it'll tie to the Tweatsy Trail. So we've got about half of this done. We've still got to come back and put the, the chat on it, but this will kind of end there roughly where Swadley is and.
The trail along Swadley ties in to Milligan Highway in very close proximity to this. So if we can get that trail down Swadley, that opens up all those apartments to the Tweatsy Trail. It also gets the trail system much closer to Tipton Haynes and Buffalo Mountain like we've, we've desired to do for quite some time. So the, that section of trail along Swadley is really an integral piece of getting interconnectivity So the, that section of trail along Swadley is really an integral piece of getting interconnectivity like we'd like to. So Water Sewer will certainly have to have right of way. We may look at having to buy some additional right of way on top of that in order to get an eight foot trail in, but I think that would be a very good investment to, to get some interconnectivity with our trailer. Thank you, Andy.
The next project that we've been working on is this is the, the wall that you see there is by the Presbyterian Church. Wild Wings Restaurant, but it's on Commerce Street. So this is the piece of property that we, we swapped with the Presbyterian Church. So the wall, the retaining wall, the existing retaining wall there was in disrepair. So we, we put in these ready rock block system there and rebuilt the wall there. We will actually be starting probably two weeks or week and a half on the rest of it. So curbing and kind of redoing it, re-striping, kind of upgrading that parking lot there across from the Farmers Market.
The way y'all have done that wall, it make the parking lot a little bit wider.
Yes.
All along the way, yeah. How will we handle traffic flow? I was over there the other day and, and so the restaurants down through there, they still stack their cans, you know, right at the end of the parking lot. I don't know if that can change or what could be done there, but it really didn't look real good. Quite honestly, they just leave them there, you know, all the time.
That's, can't think the name of.
Mid City Grill.
Mid City Grill, I guess is what you're talking about. That's, that's the only one in that block. They're, they're actually have a place in the alley. That's the reason we left part of that alley open was to get trash trucks down to there. So we just, we'll get word to them.
It's looking better over there for sure.
Of course, this is Market Street here beside City Hall. We, we did put sidewalk, sidewalk all the way over to Broadway. So from New Street all the way to Broadway, all the sidewalks in, all the curbs in, we do have a little bit of grassing and backfilling to do, but, but there is sidewalk now that connects Broadway to, to New Street or all the way over.
What that does is that's the connection from Tannery Knob to Broadway that would eventually tie into the trail system that would go over to the river.
Now, this is New, New Street, not to be confused with Novus.
Correct.
What shall we name the trail down there?
Does that mean like new new and new old? Like the new Elizabethan Highway and the, the new new, the old old Elizabethan?
Old Jonesboro Highway, right?
Sorry.
Oh, the next project that we have is our, our natural adventure playground. This is continuing to, we're moving closer to getting the equipment in and right now we're, we're waiting on our playground equipment. They've tentatively given us a date of delivery of October the first, but their communication here in the last week or so is, is not looking good. They're out of Portland and so they've actually closed down their, because of the fires, they've closed down the plant. So we're hoping to have this playground complete by the end of October. That's kind of the timeline and it still could happen, but it may be the middle of November. Just depends on when the playground equipment can be delivered because that's kind of what we're waiting on. It's more or less ready. We've got to do a little excavation to get ready for the playground equipment, but we already have the turf under contract. We have the musical, we opened bids for the other portions, musical instrument type of play equipment and that will be before you, probably the next commission. Just to follow up on the budget of the playground, this is kind of, we've already, under contract with Thomas for $58,000, $10,000 roughly for, for engraving the, the marbles around the, the flowers there in the history circle. Of course, the playground equipment you've approved, the turf you've approved, binges and musical play equipment. We have some bollards to install and then we'll have some story wall. Boulders are in, so we've got all those in. We still have some more stone and some sidewalk to put back in and then fencing and then shade structure. So we're still, we had a budget of 900,000. We're still projecting to be within that budget.
Do you have any, any update on the engraving? I know there were some problems with engraving the stones. Has that been all, all corrected?
Yes, we worked with Thomas. We selected a different stone provider. We also, we have a local provider for the engraving. We've been working with them. They've, they've been giving us proofs and so we've been communicating with them exactly what we want. So we're looking, getting a lot closer to being able to engrave that and they're out of Elizabethan. So we hopefully will have those, once they get installed, I think they're actually going to start engraving those fairly soon. As far as our resurfacing, we have so far resurfaced the Green Valley subdivision. We've also resurfaced Wayland Drive. Of course, East Market here behind City Hall and New Street, all the way to Broadway and Unica. We've done Swadley Road from Milligan Highway to Plymouth. We've done Katie's Way and, and by the way, when me and Phil sat down and went over this, he says, I can blame him. He's the one that wrote it all together. So it's Katie's Way subdivision. He said, yeah, just blame the areas on me. So there's a few on the next slide. But anyway, we've also done some small crossover streets there that you've, you may or may not notice there, Colonial Way and Fair, Fairview and then Montgomery. We've got a small portion of Montgomery to finish. We had to redo some of the sidewalks there between King Street and Market. This one is actually, whenever Phil did this, it wasn't complete, it's complete now. Kraut's Road has now been paved, so it is complete. We have Town Acres, part of the, the reason that we didn't, we did part of Town Acres a year or two ago. This is the remainder where Water Sewer was working. So Lark Spur kind of around the school. We think, I think they're projecting to pay this Saturday. We're just trying to work with the schools and make sure that we're not, any conflicts with, with school. Lone Oak, they're working on that. Again, that, that should be done fairly soon and that's from Singing Creek to Cherokee. Ridgecrest, that's Cherokee Road to Singing Creek. And again, I think they're going to kind of do that one Lone Oak around the same time. This is one where it says Old Oaks. That's not Old Oaks, that's Glen Oaks. Old Oaks is in the county, so, but Glen Oaks is actually out off of Old Boones Creek Road there in North Johnson City. We're doing a few roads in that one. Steeplechase, again, these, these are all planned. Steeplechase hopefully will be coming. We've got a lot of repair out there, so hopefully we can get it before December, but it may be after, after the new year. Of course, when we do Steeplechase, we'll also be doing some roads around Bradford Lane. This is another one, East Gates, really East Ridge. That's kind of, think over by Mountain View Elementary School. There's a couple of roads there. And then mop and roll, if you think of Miami Drive and in that area, that's what East Ridge and then Feral Drive. We'll actually be doing Feral Drive probably in the next week or so.
Do you know, when we, several years ago, I guess in 2014, when we started getting the $3 million back into the paving budget, Phil went over the way y'all graded these roads to see what really, you know, where they were in the, how long it had been, where they were in the cycle. Some of the roads, try to catch them right before they begin to degrade. And so that process is still used here that, you know, all of these projects are the ones most in need.
Yes, yes. We do have a rating system and with our asset management system, Cartograph, it does rate it on the, oh, you know, it's Army Corps of Engineers rating system as far as degradation. And you can change those grades. What we usually do is every summer, we would go out and send the interns out to kind of do a third of the city, just to make sure that our ratings were and the curves were, reflecting what was actually happening. We didn't do that this year just because of COVID, just didn't have those interns in. But yes, we are out, we do base a lot of our paving off of the grading system.
And what about kind of the pothole approach? I don't know, you may have a slide for that, but you know, we still have other roads that are, people are going to complain to say my road's worse than what this one, but you know, we, we have a lot of potholes that, that need attention, so.
Sure, and, and we do try to get those. I do have Patch Crews out at least three to four days a week, at least three days a week. And a lot of times in, when they really pop up in spring, we've got them out all the time, two trucks. So we try to make sure that we're getting all the potholes. We do go through the, through town periodically and just mark potholes ourselves so we can get out and kind of be proactive. But if anybody is aware of one, feel free to report it to us and we'll, we'll get it patched.
Final question, I'll be quiet, but I think one of the things too that we see is when third parties come and, you know, do projects, you know, dig up our streets and then they repave. I'm assuming that's the way it happens. And they don't do a good job necessarily sometimes. How do we hold them accountable to come back and fix it when it, you know, sinks down? They just haven't done a good job.
We, we actually have a road cut permit system and so we're out, what happens is they'll, they'll produce a permit. Most of the time they do, not all the time. Sometimes we're catching them, so to speak. And part of that policy, we then get to charge them double. But any case, we do have a road cut permitting system. And they'll submit the permit, once, we just kind of go out and check. Once it's done, we have a year warranty on that. So we try to check all those, those patches within that year to make sure that they have not settled. And then after that, it's more or less our responsibility to, to go back and patch those. So once they do start sinking after that year, we, we have to go back and kind of patch them and make sure that they're, they're there. Now, we do work with Water Sewer, they, they may give us a little bit more than a year on, on their patches, but you know, if they sink. But we do go out and try to inspect those regularly. I do have a gentleman that especially as it, the fall approaches, that's what we really have him going out and inspecting those patches and cuts. I think I was, Holston area, there's some, several roads there by, oh, Sivatan Park in that general area there. I think maybe Eighth, just Eighth, Chilhauys, some of those. Those are, are ones that we have identified to go ahead and pave. They're fairly rough. Minga Drive is actually ready. They'll be paving that probably here in the next couple of weeks, but that's out there towards Jonesboro. Huntington Green subdivision, we've got some work to do in there before we can pave it, but it is on the list to be repaved. We do have Brook Lane and Reston Court and Brook Lane is there by Austin Springs Road and Oakland. It's kind of the U shape that goes around the creek. That, that's the road that will be repaved this year. Lake Park Drive, we will do Lake Park Drive after the interchange is done. So that's, after the interchange is done, we will be redoing Lake Park Drive. And then Permara Road, we're just doing a part of it and if you hadn't been out there, it's, it's in bad shape as far as that goes. For Alligator Road, it's, it cracked road, it's actually stayed together better and I guess it's just because it has so much heavy truck, truck traffic on it. But we do have a lot of work to do there. And hopefully we'll be able to get through all these. We'll have a better idea of where we're at with our money. I can't promise that we'll get them all, but you know, we, we hope to. We just have to see where we're at because again, as an example with Permara, we're going to have a lot of asphalt in there in a short section. So you know, we, we'll just have to see where we're at in our budget. And that's what, that's what we're going to do. That's what Phil's doing. We're trying to get as much paved as we can. So here's just some of the other projects. Of course, Boones Creek Interchange, it's ongoing and it's a completely T-DOT administered contract and project. Harris Drive, State of Franklin Road Traffic Signal, that's the new traffic signal going by ETSU. They've actually have their signal poles here. They're just having some issues with their foundations, but I think middle of November is projected, complete date. But that is also a T-DOT contract and management. Milligan Highway, that's currently in Twin Oaks Traffic Signal. That's currently under design and that's also a T-DOT project. Of course, Bowser Ridge, we touched on a little bit. We're remediating that by adding some soil to the top or clay to, to help with the, the water drainage. The playground, we also discussed, it's still ongoing. Our goal is hopefully by the end of October, but again, just depends on the playground equipment. Commerce Street Parking Lot, once we move in here in a couple of weeks or a week and a half, that one should go fairly quickly and I don't see us being out there very long on that. It'll just be whenever we can get Summers and Taylor in to, to go ahead and pave the rest of that. Highland Church and Hare Town Road, that's actually under design. That's kind of a project that we're cooperating with the developer and the county. And the issue there has been the utilities. If you're familiar with that area, they've, they've got that really big power pole there for the power board. And so we've had to move our design around a couple of times, several times to try to accommodate them and the developer. Of course, Langston, I think Bob mentioned that earlier this evening, but Langston Neighborhood renovation, we, we hope to be starting that here in the fall and that will be the sidewalks. And then Welburn is a concrete street, so we'll actually have to tear that out and just basically rebuild that street. Mockingbird Lane and Sundell Traffic Circles, those are currently under design and hopefully we'll get that designed and be able to proceed with the construction. I'm not, I don't have a timeline of exactly when the construction for those roundabouts will begin, but those are under design. Of course, the Buffalo Valley Stream Bank mitigation, again, we approved a contract change just to, to work on the sewer tonight, but, and that, that was at the request of TDEC and Army Corps. So hopefully that design and we'll be getting closer to the permit stage of that and we can, we can start hopefully with the construction relatively soon, maybe next year hopefully. But we'll just have to see where this state and Army Corps are. Miller Lane Bridge Replacement, again, what we're doing on that one is we're just waiting on FEMA to hear if they will reimburse us before we do a whole lot of starting on that. So we've been working back and forth with them. The design is 90%, so we're just kind of waiting on FEMA to, some of their comments on the design. Sivatan Park, there's a, where it goes and it joins the, oh, golf course, the country club, where it joins the country club. The bank has slid off in these rain events and so we're working on some design. We're going to have to actually rebuild that corner of the, of the landfill there. It's kind of behind the fence and you may or may not see it, but if you are a member of the country club, I'm sure you're aware. We hope to get started on that fairly soon, but we're working on a design of actually how to, to do the.
The fence has actually dropped over on that side, hasn't it?
Yeah. And then we have North Roan Street upgrades. We have not started or that we've at least looked at the design and what this is, is adding sidewalks to both sides of North Roan Street. So we're continuing, I guess we've done some conceptual designs, but not, it's not far along in the design process. And then as far as solid waste goes, the, we're doing some renovations or recycled building upgrades. What that is, is where they wash out the trucks now, where, where part of that is that we're going to put a cover over that. It currently drains to the sanitary system, but rainwater's not allowed to get, it's not supposed to get into those drains. And we've kind of minimized that with berms to keep the rainwater out, but this cover will actually keep any rainwater from going there. But it's under design and contract, so. That's, that's all I have for our update or do you have any questions?
I've got, I was just curious, what other sidewalk potential? I mean, are there any other sidewalk projects in the pipeline? And if so, specifically more like backfilling old neighborhoods or is that even a consideration? Or is it all just kind of more arterial connectors for trail system type?
Our, our goal is to kind of do the arterial connectors or, or get from a subdivision to kind of make a wheel and spoke type of thing so you can make, walk in a circle. As far as backfilling, a lot of our subdivisions, there may be some, so like along Lone Oak, we've still got a section of that to do. We've talked about actually taking a sidewalk from Lone Oak. And again, this is kind of out into the future, several years. But across Lone Oak through the church property over to Antioch and, sorry, the church.
Grace.
Grace, thank you. Cross Grace Property, they've agreed to let us take a sidewalk across there to like Antioch, which would then connect you to the parks. Our goal is to kind of connect parks with, with our larger roads. So if you are in a neighborhood, at least you can, once you get out of your neighborhood, you can get to those sidewalks. But that's one. Of course, Swadley is, is probably the, the upcoming one that we have identified. I'm trying to think if anything, I don't know if you've had any other discussions that you ring a bell.
You know, a lot, a lot of that sidewalk stuff is driven by the availability of right of way.
Yes.
And if you've got a road project, a widening, if you've got a utility project and you're going to be in there acquiring right of way anyway, that's, that's the opportune time to go in and add sidewalk in. I mean, gosh, we could spend $3 million a year on sidewalks and trails real easily, just like we do resurfacing. It's, it's a lot to keep up with and you know, the, the other thing we, we try to focus on is, and I use the tree streets for an example, you've got 75-year-old trees planted within two feet of a sidewalk. And of course, the roots cause sidewalks to heave. We, we try to stay on top of stuff like that and keep that kind of thing repaired and that, that's a pretty high priority.
And Phil did want me to, to mention that. We have been, you know, several small projects that don't show up in this, but they do take quite a bit of time is like Highland Gates, we had some of those issues with disjointed. We're currently looking into the tree streets as an example to, to fix a lot of those issues that Pete just mentioned. So we keep, we try to, we looked at Lake Ridge, around, around Lake Ridge this last year. That also, again, it seems to be that we have some differential settlement or expansion, excuse me, and it's kind of causing some of it to, to pop up. So, so that's a lot of our, our process. Not a lot, that's several of our process. And we've also, and you know, just to reiterate, I know we, you know, the police department has had it, but we're, we've probably been down at least a crew or two for the past year. I haven't had every position filled probably for two years now. And so right now in our construction slash asphalt or concrete. now, in our construction slash asphalt or concrete, we're probably down about a full crew. So we're trying to, trying to, you know, keep up with everything, so.
The other thing I would mention is, when March arrived last year with COVID, we took some pretty drastic steps to control expenditures. One of the things that we did at that point in time, Phil had spent about two of his $3 million allocated for resurfacing. So there was about $1 million worth of resurfacing in the last fiscal year that did not get done. So as we review finances a little later in the year, I guess this is a precursor to, if things look decent in terms of finances and being able to do some one-time expenses, I would suggest to you that we try to go back and catch up on some of that resurfacing, because $3 million a year is certainly a lot more than we were doing in 2013. But $3 million a year is eroding at least 3% a year. And that's 20, let's say 20% erosion since the fee went into place. And we have been growing that fund by an average of 3% a year. So we're just going to keep getting further behind. Obviously, we've got more lane miles to maintain. The price of asphalt goes up, labor goes up. I would just strongly encourage you, we need to do all we can to stay caught up with resurfacing. We're finally starting to turn the corner. I don't feel like we've turned the corner yet, but boy, we're really close, and we don't need to lose the momentum we've gotten. But we'll be coming back to you in the next couple of months with recommendation of where we are financially.
Thank you.
Andy, thank you very much. Thank you.
I got a report that there were only 11 watching, so y'all should get double extra credit. James, please, sir.
James, Eldana is waiting.
Eldana has told me that.
You are to be brief. I'm just channeling Eldana.
All I know, it's a good thing my son's not riding the bus to school.
Where are we? But if he ever did, she knows where you live.
Okay, I will try to be brief. We do have 50 slides, but I'll try to be brief. During the pandemic, a lot of folks questioned, well, what's Parks and Recreation Golf and Seniors doing? To begin with, at that point in time, we had 38 seasonals or temporary employees on payroll. That number was reduced to 18. During an average year at this time, we would have 150-plus. So you can imagine the staffing levels. We have reallocated staff to assist in different areas. One is a new group that we developed during the pandemic to make some enhancements, and that's referred to as a painting crew. We also are assisting with custodial work here at City Hall, juvenile court, facilities management with ADA assessments, the golf course, tannery knobs, development services, and Buffalo Mountain Park. A couple of our CIP projects that we did get approved this year are outdoor restroom buildings. This is a photo taken at Rotary Park, and I do apologize, that's about a week old. This is being constructed in-house by Facilities Management, and I think we're almost to the point of putting the roof on as we speak. Once we complete this one, and it is located inside the fenced playground area, then they will be relocating to Carver Recreation to construct one there adjacent to the proposed splash pad.
Looks like it's already kind of, they're doing the splash pad.
Yes, sir.
Different.
And we have a slide on that one as well. One of the things we're proudest of and happiest for this year is we were able to relocate our Park Services Division from down here on East Main Street out to Eddie Williams Road in a vacated building there. Just shows you the main entrance before and after. All of this work, the renovation, has been 100% complete by our Park Services staff and Public Works. Just some of the photos that we took there. We did add a fenced lot to secure our vehicles and our equipment. We have a very accommodating employee break room now. We have additional storage areas that are secure. Of course, we renovated the restrooms in that building. The building itself is 10,000 square foot, so you can see it, for all intents and purposes, it houses everything that we can possibly house under the roof. One area that we're lacking in there, we do need to add a gravel drive alongside of the building, which will come to the back of the building, and there, we would like to add a parking area. Right now, our employees are parking in the front lot, which only has 13 marked spaces, and we're accommodating 30 vehicles there. So we're parked on the grass and along the curb. So we're hoping, I've talked with Mr. Penzola, we're hoping to fill some of that area behind the building and to put a gravel lot in there in the coming Metro Kewanas Tennis Courts. This facility is very popular to the senior population. We have a men's group who's out there early morning, and as well as a women's senior group who comes out twice a week and plays. As you're aware, we're patching these courts every year, and we have for many, many years. We do intend to, once again this year, include that in our CIP request. And I'll go ahead and forewarn you and give you the bad news. The estimated cost per court is about $80,000. And according to three vendors who we've had come in and inspect the courts, we're going to have to remove them completely and Also, our chief, Chief Junaluska, we had the sculptor come back last year, as many of you know. He did some additional work, and he recommended that after about six months to a year, that we go in and we apply stain and pesticide. So we've just done that, and you can see the results of that work there. Another area where Public Works had a little downtime, and they were able to help us out is striping some of our parking lots that were in dire need of such, as you can see, Metro Kewanas Park, Wing Deer Park, Willow Springs. So we're very appreciative and thankful that they were able to come in and lend a hand and help accomplish that. Our Wing Deer Park Administrative Office, if you haven't been in there, please do understand that the kitchen area was a 1950s kitchen. It was very outdated. All of our staff did the work in there. We laid the new flooring. We purchased discounted appliances, countertops and cabinets, installed all of those in-house. So it was for a minimal cost, and I think it will be much more pleasing for the folks who are renting our boardroom to have meals and snacks and so forth. And I think that will help generate additional rentals and revenue moving forward. The Massengill Monument, we've been able to replace the lighting there to LED, which will reduce the cost. And quite honestly, for over a year, there's been a problem with the wiring to that lighting, and we've been able to locate that issue and address that. Moving forward, we are going to contract out the pressure washing and cleaning of the monument. That hasn't occurred since we've moved it to Wing Deer Park, so we're working on that now. Just in general, with some of the events not taking place that normally do this time of year, we have some what we call catch-up time. And as you can see, the first photo to the left, that's the entrance to the boardwalk across the highway from Wing Deer Park. We've been able to go in and clear that out. We've been able to cut back, prune some trees, some low-hanging limbs, and not just at Wing Deer, but throughout the entire park system. So we've been able to accomplish a lot of work right now that normally, when we have softball and baseball tournaments, soccer tournaments, and all the other activities occurring, that we wouldn't be able to accomplish this time of year. As I said, our painting crew, we're very proud of these folks, and that division consists of center supervisors, people who are in our marketing and events office, Park Services staff. We have a wide variety of staff who make up this division, and we have discovered many hidden talents. We've got folks who are normally work in the senior division who are out there as well. So our next few slides that I'll show will display some of the great work. Starting at Wing Deer, we're painting all of our outdoor restroom buildings inside and out. We've gone with a new color scheme, as you can see there. We've gone with a cream and a chocolate border, chocolate doors, much more aesthetically pleasing. The building here in the middle on the top, that one was originally painted before the color scheme was decided, so we'll go back and get that one. Oh, sorry about that. Also, Lions Park, if you haven't been down there, that's a much-needed improvement. We've been able to paint all the structures there, including the dugouts, the buildings, et cetera. Metro Kewanas Park, Carnegie Park, Civitan, Powell Square. The Pete Xanis Tennis Center Building, that was a prefab building that was purchased, I think, in the late 90s, possibly. No?
80s.
80s, okay. And we've put a huge facelift on that building. We're also doing renovations to the office storage area and the restrooms there. So that will complement the entrance way to the tennis facility. If you haven't been to Jacob's Nature Park lately, the entrance on Ocala Road, we have finally been able to complete instruction or construction on the living roof pavilion, the learning pavilion there. There were several grants and private donations that made this project possible. Some of the other amenities there, the natural amenities, were added after the pavilion. Wing Deer Park Bike Station and Kiosk, the trailhead for the bike trails, as well as our disc golf course. Our staff has gone in and constructed an informational kiosk. As well, we have a private donor who is going to donate a bike station. So we went in and cleared the area, and we've poured concrete pad for that to be placed on. Legion Street Pool Painting, we would have been ready had the pool been open. We were able to paint the entire pool, as well as the building inside and out. As I said, the Pete Xanis Tennis Center, most of all the brickwork you see there, the pavers, the benches, the plaques, result of a partnership between the city and a private group who was conducting fundraising to make the improvements there. Also, we contracted the pressure washing of the 14 courts there at the tennis facility, and we went in and painted the teaching wall, or the backboard as it's referred to, and put new stripes on it. One of the most labor-intensive projects we had is to pressure wash the entire boardwalk at Wing Deer Park. That took about two weeks with five staff doing the pressure washing. That's a bit of a challenge, especially on the outside railing. But we were able to accomplish that. Hasn't been done in 10 years. And right now, we've gone back in and removed all the initial top handrail and replaced that with new lumber and sanded it down, added a bench in the gazebo area, and made a lot of improvements there. We will be, in the next two weeks, applying stain to that. We've replaced some of the boards that were bad as well. Just photos there of the new hand railing. Also, we'll be installing new lighting, which will be more pedestrian-friendly. The overhead lights that were there were constantly being broken out. It was not conducive to fishing in the evening and late at night. So we, quite honestly, could not keep that lit. So we've got lighting that will be attached to the railing now. And thanks to our forestry division, we've been able to keep a lot of the vegetation down in the immediate lakefront area. Buffalo Mountain Park improvements, we had a lot of folks who loved to hike up there, and some of the dated directional signage was just not conducive and not very informational and helpful. So we went in at minimal cost and removed those 10 old existing signs, replaced those. And working with Connie Deegan and a few other folks from Buffalo Mountain Park, we added an additional 20. So we should not have anyone getting lost there, I hope, Mayor.
You can go ahead and tell them.
Well, Mr. Wither Spoon said he and his wife got lost there.
I went up on my birthday, that's what I wanted to do, was to hike up to White Rock with my family, and we took the wrong turn. We got lost, added an extra mile to the hike for sure, which was good. It was fine. It was pretty steep up in that area. But yeah, I came back down, and there is kind of a which way to go, and we just chose the wrong way. But thank you. That's great. Really good.
Our field improvements are continuing. You see Civitan for the sod that was applied there. The after photo is the bottom there under that. It's made a world of difference. We're using the Bermuda sod. Of course, Wing Deer Park Top Dressing and Sodding. And as we proudly told our park board at their monthly meeting this past month, it's amazing what one year of non-play will do for the growth of the sod and the, our playing facilities. So we were happy to get that much-needed break on our playing fields.
What does it mean, when we've had these torrential rains, you know, a month or so ago, is it draining a lot better out there now?
It's draining very well, yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, I was out there yesterday, and staff's checking that daily. You know, if anything, we're not watering it enough, in my opinion. I've talked with staff about keeping the irrigation running. But now, we will be moving to Wing Deer Park. I think the initial plans are to start placing some Bermuda sod on Field Number Three there. All right, Memorial Park Community Center, as you well know, it is closed. However, the maintenance staff there has had a lot of quality time to complete a lot of pressure washing of the building, sidewalks, bleachers, concession area across the street at the Little League Complex, as well as our tennis courts, brick columns around the perimeter. And they've been able to accomplish a lot of extensive landscaping work there. Freedom Hall Pool, the pool is open for scheduled lap swim, and it's very popular right now, as you can imagine, as well as use for the swim team, social distancing. As you can see, the photo to your right is being enforced. I will tell you, unfortunately, I was notified by Mr. Miller in our Rec Services Division yesterday that one of the pumps has gone down, and we're working to expedite getting that repaired. It may take us a week to make that repair, but we're diligently working on that. Yes, sir? Well, it's a matter of a part, sir. And we're actually expediting delivery. Initially, it was two weeks, and we're getting it in one. So. The Carver Splash Pad, as you said, Commissioner, it's underway. They broke ground September 4th. Again, this photo is about a week old now. The dirt area that you see here in the photo to your left is all rock now. They've hauled in, I think, seven truckloads of rock there. They've already stubbed that up. The drains are laid, so we're moving along rather quickly there, and we're very excited that that has finally gotten off the ground. Hopefully, the finished product will be very similar to what you're seeing here on this And another piece of good news, staff has applied again this year for consideration for a Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthy Place Grant. This is the 75th anniversary of Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they are awarding 10 cities across the state $750,000 grants, with 150 of that being designated for a 10-year maintenance plan. Staff has identified a flat area between the Veterans Memorial and the creek at Kewanas Park, and this entire project should fit very comfortably there. And we're optimistic that this will come into play. It will accommodate anywhere from age two to five up to our senior population. We do have some exercise stations around the perimeter walking trail there, so we're keeping our fingers crossed on that one. keeping our fingers crossed on that one. And that is Parks and Recreation going all out to improve and enhance our facilities, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, want to talk about golf?
So as we have seen through Parks and Rec, and as you see in other parts of the city, COVID hit a lot of businesses hard, but golf has been fortunate, not only in Johnson City, but all across the country, to really be fortunate in staying open through it all, but also seeing, as reported by National Golf Foundation in a report that just came out a couple of days ago, seeing some of the biggest numbers in growth and revenues in the last 20 years in the game of golf. So while I know a lot of people are struggling through it, we feel very fortunate where the game of golf is heading. So I want to take a look at kind of some trends we're seeing, and while, when I started in the golf business, it was all about growing the game of golf, trying to find people to get to come to the game. I think what the virus has done is brought people to the game, so now I think a new look at it moving forward is going to be, how do we retain these people? And I think a lot of stuff we're doing out of Pine Oaks will have people staying with us for a while. So just being a couple of months into the new fiscal year, I thought it'd be a good chance to look back at July and August over the last three years. As you can see up there, the gray bars or the green bars are July, so the last couple of years, July had stayed about the same, right around $65,000 in revenues. And then we saw a pretty good jump this July, up to $70,000. The biggest jumps we've seen is in August. Typically, August is a very hot month for us. We've got a lot of cold-tempered grass out there, but we're seeing our play stay consistent, if not growing, through all of this. So we're seeing some big jumps in August there, all the way back to 2018, where it was just at $50,000. This year, we saw a very good August, all the way up to $75,000. Just kind of breaking those numbers down, the percent increase in them in July, right around 8.5% there for both months of growth, and then obviously, with the biggest growth there in August, almost 50%. Taking a look at year-to-date, all of these numbers are through Labor Day of this year, so looking back at the last couple of years through Labor Day of 2019 and 2018, our rounds are up. Comparing it to 2019, we're up almost 3% and up over 6% from 2018. So even with the pandemic having people stay home, we are still seeing a nice growth in our rounds out of Pine Oaks. And this is just a breakdown of our rounds, just some highlights to look at, looking at this initially. Our weekend rounds are up, while our weekday rounds are down, which initially, just in the most recent weeks, probably contribute that to some of our high schools are starting to have matches, and we've got involved with PGA Junior League. So a lot of our donated rounds that we do to the public and everything are taking place during the weekday, and then, so we're seeing a lot more public play on the weekends. Another thing that's a big hit, as you can see over here, is our Health Walk late in the afternoon, so you can come out, walk as much as you'd like for $9. We're seeing a continual trend in that, and that was obviously a big hit during the April, March, and May months there, when people were really trying to get out of the house and do some stuff. So we saw a lot of people come out late in the afternoons and walk. And this is just a nice little quick snapshot of all of our revenues over the last three fiscal years. All of these numbers come from finance, so pull these straight from our reports through Emily in Finance there. As you can see, we're trending in a great direction, and again, I think it'll just be about keeping the retention of these new customers that we have coming to the game of golf and keeping this trend going in the future. Just again, taking a look at year-to-date, always like to know where I stand within the year, the calendar year, with the seasons of golf coming along. So again, all of this is through Labor Day of this year, looking at, through Labor Day the last couple of years, you can see that. As comparing to last year, we're up almost $35,000 from 2019. Discounted, the big revenue numbers here are green fees, obviously a nice trend there over the last three fiscal years, seeing a big jump from FY19 to FY20. And as you can see, our first two months in FY21, we're seeing revenues increase from there, so we're expecting to see this trend to continue in all of these categories. Again, nice trend in our cart fees, and I think we would have seen an even bigger spike in our cart fees here, except for the fact that we were in the single rider from pretty much the 1st of April all the way through the middle of August. So even with that big of a jump in cart fees, we could have seen a bigger one, but obviously, trying to keep everybody socially distant out there as well. And then the big one is kind of been one of my main focuses coming into Pine Oaks, was our merchandise, trying to make that a focal point. We're seeing some big spikes there in our merchandise. Again, just trying to do different things in the golf shop, selling some apparel, making sure we're fully stocked in all the products that golfers need, and we're also bringing some club repair to the clubhouse, so selling grips, re-gripping for customers, and doing some reshaffting as well in that. And again, from FY18 to FY20, we saw, you know, almost doubled everything there, 95%. And then kind of our big project that came in at the end of FY20 there was our new practice facility at Pine Oaks. Our total cost there was just over $34,000 to get everything there. All of this was in our budget process leading up to that year as well, so got new signage out there, got artificial mats for people to hit during bad weather, or when we're trying to improve turf conditions out there on the tee, got our range cart for picking the golf balls, and our ball dispenser. So again, that was what was needed to get everything set up for the driving range. And just in the first two months, we're seeing it even more popular than I expected. You know, we're selling small buckets for $3.50 and a large bucket for $7. So a small bucket's anywhere from 30 to 35 balls, a large bucket's anywhere from 60 to 70. In its first full month of operation, we saw over $2,000, and then last August, we saw almost $3,500 generated off of that driving range. So again, it's, we got people out there from daylight to dark hitting golf balls, so it's been a nice little added amenity out there to Pine Oaks. Some of the projects that we've done through all this as well is, along with, as Mr. Ellis said, with Parks and Rec, we're trying to give a nice facelift to all of our buildings out there with new paint. Our maintenance building was painted there with the same color scheme that the rest of Parks and Rec is going with. Bruce Miller is now operating Pine Oaks Deli out of our clubhouse, which has been a huge hit, in which he's also selling beer there as well. I can give you firsthand experience that the smell of bacon throughout the day while you're working keeps you nice and hungry, so Bruce is doing a great job there. And then one of our CIP equipment purchases for the new year was a fairway mower, which is added to the playing conditions out of Pine Oaks. And much like you've heard the theme probably from all over the city, and as you've seen with our added rounds and revenues and everything, I thought it'd be a good moment to kind of brag on the staff that you do have out there at Pine Oaks, obviously working shorthanded as what they're used to. Over those last three years, I was looking at numbers, at the peak, Pine Oaks had 17 seasonal employees at the highest in those three years. We currently have seven. I've got one in the golf shop, and Bill Fuller's got six on his staff, maintenance staff, which is also still in charge of going out to Buffalo Valley and mowing it once a week. But I think it's, to see the way the revenues and play and everything is increasing, I think it'd be remiss not to brag on the guys that we do have out there, and how they're going above and beyond their normal job duties on what they're doing day-to-day. Just looking ahead at some future projects and equipment for the golf course, obviously the clubhouse, it's needing some facelift to the outside, like to get a nice fresh coat of paint on it as well. Taking a look at its shingles, it's easy to see that we could use some type of repair or replacement of those. And then obviously, to kind of complement the new deli at Pine Oaks, a added patio or covered eating area to the outside of the clubhouse would be a nice complement to it. Future equipment purchases that obviously will help with playing conditions out there would be a bunker rake, core harvester, top dresser, a new greens mower, and then an added amenity to that mower would be a verticup.
Brian, I don't see the pavilion on here.
And the pavilion. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, thank you.
Next, I'd like to ask El Dona to come up and give us an update on transit.
Thank you, James. Transit capital project update involves equipment buses. We took delivery of seven school buses that were approved for the 2021 budget, 72-passenger buses, two 24-passenger buses. Mass transit, we have, one bus has been delivered. We have several buses still in Murphysboro at the distributor. Those will be delayed because they've had a break-in in their locked fence facility, and our buses that are sitting there, thieves stole the catalytic converters. So they're waiting on replacement catalytic converters before some of those buses can be delivered. But that's in effect the capital projects budget for Johnson City Transit. That's it. That's it. Let's go.
Thank you.
Give us an update on ridership, school transit, mass transit, effect of COVID on buckshot, some of this time.
Well, where do you want to start?
Buckshot.
Buckshot. Well, with the reduced on-campus activity, we reduced the level of service to match what ETSU has requested of us. One of the things that's been talked about is if there is a basketball bubble, transportation will be key to that, and we're waiting to hear, and of course, we'll provide that service through the buckshot contract. Effect on ridership, we are, on mass transit, ridership has been very steady. We're still on reduced capacity, running additional vehicles as necessary. Ridership is now back to about 75%. We do require masks to be worn at all times on the transit buses. Paratransit is back to full strength with all the doctor's offices open. Of course, we've maintained operations. We have not stopped since the COVID outbreak. Obviously, March, April, and May, when school was in session, we did not run school buses, but we did participate in the feeding program, remotely distributing food. And from March to July, we delivered over 52,000 meals to kids in Johnson City. That process has started again. We are continuing to deliver meals during the school day from 9:30 to 12:30, covering, we've got four buses, eight employees and plus food service employees, delivering approximately 400 meals a day. That will continue until funds run out, and that's for folks who are participating in remote learning, we're delivering food to those sites. In terms of school transit, obviously with the alternate schedule, ridership is down. I've been able to park four buses, which is good because we're 12 drivers short every day. That doesn't count the ones I have out on medical leave. So every day is a challenge. Sometimes I park a bus with very little notice because we just don't have drivers for it. And especially in the afternoon, we change routes, Liberty Bell, Science Hill, we move kids to a different bus, and that's going to be the process moving forward until when regular classes resume, then we're going to have some severe challenges, meeting the needs, once the demand picks up again.
El Dona, are you short drivers? I mean, I know it's hard to recruit and, you know, get eligible drivers. Do you have some of your drivers who just didn't want to come back and drive the bus?
We had five of those that did not want to come back because of COVID.
Just being shut up in a bus?
Right. So we had five of those, and then we had a couple retire. We were not able to hire, train, or anything because the state of Tennessee wasn't testing. And they've undergone changes with the way they do testing now. So without a third-party tester, they shut down testing out there for several months.
For CDL?
For CDL tests, yes. So those are just daily challenges that we do every day. My employees have come to work every day. We're providing PPE. They know what we do. They never complain about it. They show up to work every day, and we've never stopped service. Other systems in March shut down. We did not, and we will not, because we know that people depend on us to get to work. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. What you do.
Brevity.
Thank you.
That brings us to public input.
Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to address the commission? And it can't be you, James. Okay, I've seen no one, I'll close the public input.
And that brings us to the conclusion of your agenda.
Well, any commissioners have any final words? No? Commissioner Calhoun, Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am.
I don't either, so I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Good meeting.